Good evening, everybody. We're gonna stand and do the, we're welcome to our board meeting. We're gonna stand in the pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Erin, would you please take it?
Councilmember here, Councilmember Diddrick.
Here.
Councilmember Koiner.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Shering will not be there.
Taking these little ones or grandkids to the, to today. Alright, so, um, first item is, uh, we need approval of the agenda. Were there any changes that anybody had? I did not have any.
I have no changes.
Council, any changes on any of them? No? Okay, with that, we'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion.
I'll second that, Joe. Okay. Uh, any further questions? No? Okay, Joe?
Yes.
Linda, that's Brian?
Yeah.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item. We have public input period. Right up here, there we go. Uh, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record before proceeding with any comments. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes with the overall public input period limited to thirty minutes. Under Iowa Open Meetings law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during the public input period which do not relate to action items on the agenda. Is there anybody who would like to speak to the council tonight? You can come up and talk to me often. You can do it when we do our others, whichever you prefer to do.
I don't know.
Okay, let's wait. Let's wait. Okay, then she can answer questions. Okay, that'd be great. Okay, hearing that, I'm going to close the public input period and we'll move on to the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the June twenty-third council meeting and the June thirtieth city council and community as a whole meeting. Next, I need a motion to adopt resolution sixty-one, which is approving the bills in our expense report. Next item, I need a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the city reports and minutes from the May eighth library board meeting and minutes from the June twenty-seventh Board of Adjustment meetings and the June twenty-twenty-five wastewater report. I need a motion to approve the liquor license for, um, I believe it's at Riverbend. Yep. I also need a motion to approve or adopt resolution sixty-two, and that's a salary amendment for one of our city workers who's eligible for a step increase. I need a motion to approve the downtown incentive grant application that was recommended by the design committee. It's a second-story loan in the amount of ten thousand dollars. And a facade grant for the north side in the amount of seventy-two fourteen and a facade grant for the west facade. And the amount of sixty-three, sixty-six, sixty-seven for Franklin Place at one oh two North Franklin Street. I need a motion to adopt resolution sixty-three, and that's to amend the employee handbook in regards to rules, uh, for cell phone usage, and that's to keep up with the new laws that were passed by the state. Next, I need a motion to approve the appointment of Annette Lenz. Uh, it's actually a reappointment to the Park and Rec Commission to serve another three-year term. Her current term expires June thirtieth, and she'd like to continue serving. I need a motion to adopt resolution sixty-four. Uh, this is Saint Mary's has requested a parking restriction on the section of West Butler Street across this, from the school. They're looking to prohibit parking from seven-thirty to four P M on school days to ease traffic. We need a motion to adopt resolution sixty-five, and that'll approve professional service agreement with the Burlington Group for survey and easement work for the city storm sewer that's running. Uh, this is regarding.
The wine street.
Wine street.
And then also the water main.
And the water main, yes. So if it's two with one, okay. Next, I need a motion to approve the payment to Fergram in the amount of twenty-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents for engineering services, services for Anderson Street Fieldwork Design Services Utility Coordination Downtown Stormwater Study. Need a motion to review the Board of Adjustments', uh, decision to approve the request of Laura Hunt for the property at nine oh one east, or nine oh one New Street. An exception to, um, for singles. This was, uh, front yard setbacks. Next one, I need a motion to, um, review the decision of the Board of Adjustment, and that was for, uh, request by William and Sheila Westray for the property at two thirteen East Union Street. Want it's, uh, construct a picket fence. And we also need a motion to review the decision by the Board of Adjustment for a conditional use permit for Castle Theater regarding a sequence we can sign. I have all of those notions, or all of those items. I'll take a motion in a second and I'll open it all for discussion.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second. Okay. Any discussion or questions?
Uh, item three point one three on that fence height one.
Yes.
Now that we know that that's an issue or.
That one though, before applying is only the next meeting, verify what the, um, response is. Three foot is typical. Um, and so I just need to have been that in the ordinance that we got the nation city council adopted.
Any other questions? Hearing that, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
And Joe? Alright. No public hearings tonight, so we'll move on to our regular agenda items. Our first one is a motion to proceed with the first consideration and adoption of ordinance five, and that's amending the city code pertaining to rental housing and, um, pest control. And I'm going to, I invited, uh, after our community as a whole, I invited Crystal D Shaw to come here and speak to us about bedbugs. Yeah, go ahead and do Castle's.
And the packet.
Yeah.
Each there.
And did you guys get copies for the stuff that we also got from Jim?
He gave me his errand something about last week.
That's okay, y'all got that. Alright. Alright, thank you.
Um, so all, in this little packet, just some information on like fleas, bedbugs, um, really what landlords, you know, are supposed to do by law in, in Iowa, it is minimal. However, like at the very end of your packet, um, there is a section that if they have a, between the landlord and the, um, tenant, if they have a certain, um, form sign that they do have seven days that they would have to, like, if they had a bedbug infestation or a flea infestation, they, they would have to cover that. But there is no law saying that that landlord has to cover it, and I think that's where the concern is. And I'm sure most of you are aware, bedbugs is an ongoing issue, um, throughout. I mean, Manchester and the county aren't really. Um, and the biggest thing is, you know, we do have low-income housing, and those individuals cannot afford to even pay for that treatment. And then when it's in department complexes, um, really the next door neighbor and up and down person should be treated too because they, they will move. Um, and it's, it's easy as one bug coming on your shoe from going to a movie theater or anywhere, and then you can turn into an infestation. So I think that's kind of one of the biggest concerns, along with like flea infestation, those kinds of things. The heat treatment used to, we used to hear that happening a lot, and that is more expensive. However, that will like, that can ruin a place, um, your electrical lines and those kinds of things. So they do have, um, your Terminex and the pesticide places that are able to do that and do treatments, but that tenant, that landlord, they all have to work together to, to make that happen. You can't keep the same bed and same furniture and but then at the same time you get asked to throw it out. Um, so really working together on that. Um, fleas is the other one, but obviously bedbugs and on the public health side. Unfortunately, there's nothing we can do law-wise. Our Board of Health cannot because yes, they can bite you and people react to them differently, and that's our immune response. Um, but they do not cause diseases. So if it were a rat infestation or something like that, we could, you know, have more laws in a place for that where bedbugs, we have no law. There's unfortunately, nothing we can do, um, to enforce things. So it really would be up to a council to help our tenants, our people in the town to have some assistance with that.
Any questions?
Yeah, I had a question. Um, people set stuff off the curb, and a lot of people get up now. How are you gonna prevent people from doing that?
Yeah, no. We, we talked about that, in fact, when we were in one of the meetings, and I think that also has to be something like when we know that they're going to be getting rid of the stuff that we have a contact with the sanitation department. So they are right there and hauling it away so it's not being just put out on the curb, that it just can't be put out on the curb.
Yeah, and I represent a number of landlords. I mean, like, people who have multiple, you know, twenty-five-hundred units kind of thing.
Yeah.
When we have a bedbug infestation, we monitor what happens to the stuff being removed from our unit because it's to the landlord's benefit to not have it get reinfected. We really want to pay him for it.
Yeah, right.
So there's a real incentive for it. Most of the ones we do, we don't have any trouble. We really will police it because we'll see tenants even knowing there's bedbugs, try to bring them back. Because there's something with the pool.
Yeah.
It's great.
And that's something on our side is public health too, like, you know, I don't know that we've ever done a press release or information or push education out about the, the curb side. You know, we just created a new meeting, and then we were talking about the consignment stores because there have been consignment stores where people are getting furniture and boom. So we did send a letter. There's a copy of that, just so you can kind of see what we sent out and sent out some, you know, a checklist of things to look at if they're bringing those things into their consignment stores because they don't want to affect their whole store either.
Anti-productive. But yeah, okay, you did say something that, um, I'd never heard before, though. Um, that you can't make them get rid of some of their items? Is that true?
Yeah, so under, if you look through some of these under like tenants, um, and things that they, what landlords need to know or what tenants need to know, um, questions and answers, it does say in here that you cannot like make them get rid of their items. Um, again, that's working together and like beds, if you impose a bed in a zip-up thing that covers the whole bed and then stored it away, in twelve months, they will die if they can't get out, but.
I mean, he says it doesn't have a grip or something.
Right, yes. So that is under the questions and answers. Um, and I, again, I work as all from Iowa Legal Aid, um, Iowa Health and Human Services kind of with their resources too, but it's just, there's no actual law. There's nothing we can we can do, and there's no funds to help get rid of these, and it is costly, and they it sucks. We have patients come in and they're crawling all around and, you know.
Kind of like, I hate, like, we deal with the lice, the schools dealing with the lice.
Yes.
Yeah.
Again, they change that. There's no, you know, back in the day, you went home and had treatment. Now you cannot enforce that and so we, again, try to help work with those families and they pill these days, but you have to be like back there with them and the cleaning and the, you know, stuff.
There's chemical.
Go ahead.
There's chemical eliminations better than the heat?
Well, so, um, with the heat, there is that risk, and I don't, you know, some of the apartment complexes or some homes are, I don't, maybe they're not built the same, so there, there is that risk of the electrical, because it warms up to like, I don't even know, it's, yeah. Yeah, so they have found like doing, you know, getting rid of the furniture and those pieces and wallpaper and all of those things, and you can come in and have, and do pesticide treatments. It's not just a one and done. It's a, it's about a six months to even nine-month period, and they will evaluate and they know if they're living, and they can live for weeks without any blood, so they can still hide in those areas and then they come out.
Yeah, I know it's really hard for apartment.
Yes.
Because when they do one room, they just go.
Yes, yeah.
We had it next door, they, you know, one was doing it one week and two weeks later, the next one was doing that, then the next one, and it just keeps, and, yeah.
And we wanna, you know, everyone wants to put blame on someone, but again, it could happen to any of us and us, you know, people we take care of. I mean, our home care people go into homes and take care of people with bedbugs. They wear proper P P D, but who, there's.
Just takes one.
Still a risk, yep.
We did have one rental, or one landlord who was at one of our meetings, and he was very informative. I mean, he taught us a lot that day about what he does, you know, to stay ahead of it and everything, and so it was very informative.
Yeah.
The, uh, we were talking about the lice and them not forcing treatment like it used to be. Is that because it's not a disease-carrying bug again?
Yeah, and that, I mean, honestly, that has changed in the last, I don't even know, before I like began public health, which is over five years ago, so I don't know the complete backstory, but yeah, it's not a disease-carrying and, and they don't jump from head to head, you know, you gotta lay on each other. And the schools within Delaware County are really good, and we work really good with them, and we do try and help um, mitigate that, and when there is an issue, we try really hard to work with our providers and, um, provide anything we can. Um, it's not maybe one to two kids in a school year out of maybe three or two of the school, or you know what I mean? And they have elementary, high school, that stuff, so it's it's low, but it does happen.
Yeah. Like I say, um, the identification of the bites is key because my brother-in-law worked at a health facility and it was isolating the, the bites and knowing right off the bat, you got a problem. If you catch it early enough, you know.
Yeah. And it may take a while. I mean, I've seen people that just start getting bites and itching and like, what the heck? And then we bring up the word bedbug, and they're like, there is no way. I'm a very clean person. I don't, why would I get them? And then you pull that couch cushion up and it's covered, and it just took that long for you to have a reaction to it. But yeah, that's, it's, it is a tough, tough, tough one, as we're all itching. Yeah.
Um. Well, how bad is the infestation of Manchester?
I mean, I don't know a number, but there's, I don't even know how to.
It's on the rise?
I wouldn't say it's on the rise. I think it's been pretty steady for probably at least five years, I would say.
I've seen bowling trucks around, so.
Yeah.
There are. If you see them, you'll, you know right away.
Yeah.
Um, Jim provided us some information. I know we were looking at adjusting our ordinance a little bit here, but he brought some information that what Dubuque does, I thought was really interesting.
They, uh.
Yeah, you can sit down, absolutely. We might call you back.
Did that get put out to anybody?
The council.
Council guy.
Yeah.
I mean, you did, and you have some sympathy for the landlord as far as what are they supposed to do, but the reality of it is you're not gonna, most tenants aren't gonna pay for the cost because they, many times they aren't gonna afford it. It's not cheap to do. Well, we ended, just before you get to the Dubuque thing, we have an addendum, and there's an addendum that they suggested that landlords use, but we have one we've made my clients use. And frankly, if they don't cooperate with getting rid of the bedbugs, we're just a victim. If they cooperate, we're perfectly, that happens. That's part of being a landlord. You have to fix plumbing, you have to fix other things. They do have to cooperate. If we get a report that the, uh, they brought things back in, we get a report, we have an addendum, they get a report that they, uh, kept somebody from getting to where they needed to treat, there we, we're a victim. There's no, landlords can't put that. And the bottom line is, the city just can't get into the idea. I think the most telling thing in that paper Dubuque was, we're not at work. We just, the city just can't, we don't have the time to be the bedbug court. And, uh.
So this addendum would be then provided to the landlords that they can use with their leases, is that what?
That's right. We put them in our leases, but we say, if you have bedbugs, here's the rules you have to comply with. If you don't, if you have to report it right away, we want you to tell us because we wanna and we, we don't have any sanctions for them for reporting it in that addendum, but we do have, if you don't comply with treatment, then you're out.
This would be model language to why and what you can use in their, their lease agreements.
Their lease agreements, that's what I meant. Yeah, okay.
This one, because one I have comes from USD eight housing. I don't know, that's where, the one I see the most of. But really, I think like they put it in the Dubuque thing. It's, it's a little different from any other conditions that we have to regulate. From a landlord's point of view, I think it's pretty frustrating to deal with. I understand that.
You're hit that point. Not gonna.
With, uh, with the. And they knew amending provisions on this, or this kind of be an offer, are we not aggressive enough, or where, where do we think we're at on that? As far as what we can.
Process right now in our, by making it a, an infestate, by just putting in the word bedbugs in that ordinance. We have an appeal process if they think but we can take it. If they don't treat it, we give them notice. We can just take anything else in that ordinance. We can make it so they can't run it. Same as if they close off windows or don't have heat. Now, it's gonna be harder for us to prove those things. It's gonna really require tenants to come forward. And many of them may be afraid to come forward because they don't want to get, for fear of being evicted.
Right.
I think this adds to the, what we're doing here adds to kind of the minimum standards for people's ability to live in a house safely, you know, that they're renting. I think it's good giving landlords this other language, sort of they can use that. Um, so then it's their decision, but I think it would be nice if we could give that to our landlords, you know, offer to them. Here's a suggestion we have that might help you. Um, because we can't do much about it, but we're trying to help you to deal with it if it becomes a problem for you. I think you're dealing with it then in both ways. We're doing what we can, but we're offering them a suggestion for what they can do too.
You really all were acknowledging this. It's inappropriate to have an apartment with bedbugs.
Right.
That's really all your, that's really sad.
Right.
I think most people would have thought it was in there.
Would have thought it'd been part of it. Yeah, I was surprised that it didn't include it when we dug a little deeper when we were first talking about.
Something I never thought of when we did it originally. It was just nothing I even considered.
Yes.
Linda, how do you feel about this? Because I know you're a landlord, and so like.
I think the, and then the language is very good. I'll have to look into that.
Yeah, but, you know, there are remedies. To landlords don't like having vacant places, so you want to salvage a land at a tenant, you want to, but if they're not wanting to cooperate, they're out. And we also have, I think this in some of these addendums, if there's a repeated violation and we can show that they did it, then there's some other thing. But you're not gonna spend time suing people. You don't sue your tenants when you're a victim because it costs too much money.
Right. Okay, so do we need to adjust anything on the current?
I, I think that you have it. Now, I think we'll probably in practice find things we want to adjust. That's what usually happens, but.
Just like the last time that this, this code was written, it's the best way we want to do it today, so we just run with what we got today and
amended.
amended what we need to do later down the road.
I could change it from specific to bedbugs to, um, free of insect infestations, including but not limited to bedbugs, fleas and other pests.
Which is what.
That was what we had talked about. So, yeah, that sounds alright.
We need to be careful on some, I don't think it'll matter. I mean, insect infestations could be, uh, ladybugs.
Oh.
We've all had. Man, I don't know if we really want to enforce. How are you gonna?
Infat, and take the insect out and just say.
I'm concerned. I think we just have to use judgment, not try.
I think so too.
Yeah.
I don't, we just have, I don't. You have to do a list.
I don't think you can make the list. I'm just pointing out that there's some judgment calls we'll have to make in enforcement, because that, that example, I mean.
You could say box holder bots.
We've been, we've been, we've been fighting those in my house for a year.
Yeah.
More ants or anything.
Right, right.
Yeah.
A bill had brought a bed the last meeting about fleas because they've gone in to deliver furniture and have run into them, so that's
turned around, walked out.
Where the change in the language came from.
Right.
I'm just, I'm just suggesting, we just, one of those things we're gonna want to be, what, that's one of those things we find people want to overread that, we may limit.
Right. Well, I would move for approval of the perjury and consideration for.
Can I ask something before you do that?
Watch, yes.
What if you change it to something, public, uh, things that cause public health or something, if we did something in that way, so we don't have to maybe amend it?
Probably all, well, I mean, that's our intent.
But, but as.
What's something else?
Saul just said that bedbugs aren't necessarily public health. You can't really.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, that's, okay, sorry. I'm overthinking. Thank you. Alright, alright, sorry. Back to what you were saying. I, I make a motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Alright, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
And Linda?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Crystal. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, next, uh, item, uh, ordinance, uh, we have motion to proceed with the third consideration and final option of ordinance three, and this is regarding our water and sewer rates.
I'll make a motion to approve.
In a second.
I'll start.
Any further discussion? Alright, uh, Joe?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Brian? Alright.
Unfortunately, yes. We don't want to raise the race, we'll be gone.
Alright, uh, next, I need a motion to proceed with the second consideration and adoption of ordinance four, and this is pertaining to the police department streamlining the operations of, um, of, uh, Tim overseeing the city manager handling the day-to-day administrative functions.
Just to clarify this, I've had some people talk to me about it. This is not Nate Tim in control of the police department. You just are the day-to-day boot on ground that are gonna handle the situations, and then when the mayor needs to be.
The police chief still runs, the police department. It's just I oversee the day-to-day operations as far as budgeting, uh, personnel issues and stuff like that.
We do not give him a gun or a chaser.
Well, I heard that the only way you can get a taser is if you're chased first.
Yeah.
I could talk, I could talk to Ben and maybe about telling you you're jaywalking or something.
Now, this really just changes what, or outlines what currently happens. When we do union negotiations, I'm part of the negotiating team. What we do in personnel relations related or budget related, I'm part of that conversation. Uh, so it really just kind of outlines the change, man.
And it's just because my position isn't full-time in here, so that's.
In our city authority or.
That's exactly right. All mine independence.
I just wanted to get the clarity out there because I've had some questions about it, and I don't have a following that watches them.
Yeah, and the mayor is still the person that will appoint with council approval and remove with council approval with police chief. It's just the process that's in place.
I look for, if you're ready to proceed, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Any further discussion? Joe?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Mary Ann?
Yes.
Alright, next, I need a motion to adopt resolution sixty-six. And this is an agreement with Snyder and Associates. Uh, this is for a comprehensive plan. Do you want to go over this again?
Sure. Uh, so we did have a committee of two council members, two police commission members. Uh, myself and Laura Thomas and the mayor, uh, we reviewed the proposals, your request for qualifications for our comprehensive plan update. Uh, Snyder Associates did come in top with the highest score. Uh, we did bring them in for an interview with the committee. Uh, after the interview, the committee felt comfortable with making recognition, we hired Snyder Associates to complete our comprehensive plan update. Uh, we have budgeted forty thousand dollars in this next, this current fiscal year, I guess now. Um, their proposal gave it forty-two thousand dollars. We'll make an amendment in our budget later on. Uh, but it will take about a year first to get this project updated.
And that will include, uh, information from the, the community as well.
Correct. We will have numerous public engagements unless we're getting feedback from the community as far as what they see as far as future development for the city of Manchester.
And all the bids pretty much came in all very close. It's just they, they, they're just very impressed with their presentation and so forth.
Um, when they do the public engagements, how do those work out?
Uh, well, it depends upon what the event they're going to use. We'll probably do a, uh, open house at the fire station like we've done in the past. Um, some of the stuff they talked about is they've gone to other events in the community and have tables set up. Whether they went to a basketball game in the winter because people were at the basketball game, that's not their normal setting, so they might feel a little bit more comfortable coming up, engaging and talking to people about this. Um, plus, they're already at an event, and so they're able to be there. So they have a couple different ways, and then they'll have a website, which get, get our feedback, uh, through surveys and stuff as well.
So this is really the time for the community to come out and say, like, use your voice and tell us what you want to say.
Exactly. You know, how can they improve the community? What are we missing? Um, how do we look at developing our community for the next twenty-five, fifty years? What corridors do we need for traffic enhancement? You know, how do we handle, um, some redevelopment? What corridors do we need for traffic enhancement? You know, how do we handle, um, some redevelopment? The downtown's key, one of the areas we're gonna look at because we do have some vacant storefronts, how do we redevelop our downtown, what do we do to improve that? But we also have to look at, uh, transportation modes, where are we seeing our growth right now, how is that impacting the roads that they're growing on?
In traffic. Uh, so I would take a motion.
I'm gonna make the motion, I was on the committee and as I made the motion, I would like to say that. They came in and talked to us and they did a wonderful job, I thought, of explaining what they wanna do and talking to us. And really making me feel very secure that they're going to be a good group to work with. Before they came in, I had some questions about them, I was not sure about some things. But, um, having talked to them, I'm really excited to work with them, I think that they're gonna be very, very good. So I would make the motion to accept their.
Is there any further questions or any other discussion? Oh, question, where will we start with this?
Uh, once I get the contract signed, it's really up to us, one of the first things we'll do is, uh, do an introductory meeting with the plans on commission. And I'm probably gonna try to do a joint meeting with the plans and city council, so we kill two persons with one stone.
I thought we'd wait till summer was over, isn't it?
Towards August, probably the initial meeting.
Right.
So that way we wait till school starts, because that's when people start slowing down.
Right.
Uh, traffic, uh, or vacations get in place and people are ready to get engaged again.
Glad you clarified on the vacation part slowing down, because when school happens, I think it gets really busy for.
It does with sporting events and stuff.
People that got a bunch of kids.
Joe, you're an anomaly here.
I know, I know. Somebody's gotta help the population around here.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. Alright, I need a motion, um, to adopt resolution sixty-seven, and that's approving our lease agreement extension with DePaco Community Credit Union. At a cost of twenty-two oh five a month, that's another three years, right?
That's correct. Three years at that rate, um, the city of Manchester is partnered with NICC for about ten years now. To make sure that we do have both secondary education opportunities here in the community. Yeah, you may not remember, for somebody who are new on the council, uh, there was a period where we did not have any post-secondary education opportunities. In Delaware County at all, the NICC and Upper Iowa both left the community and that left us in a lurch for a little bit.
And that was in like two thousand three or two thousand four.
Yeah.
It was right after.
And and so one of the ways we were able to partner, now initially it was a three-way partnership with Upper Iowa, NICC and Save Manchester. Uh, because we got engaged with some skin in the game, they were really coming to the table and we cost sharing the, uh, facility. And the employee out there and stuff like that, uh, we're now just paying for half the rent. You know, that's, we've scaled back a little bit, the idea here is try to help grow that center to the point where they're self-sufficient, where the activities are doing. Uh, is able to take part, so we don't pay for any staffing out there, I'll work any portion of the rent. Uh, the county at one time was paying for, uh, the janitorial services and I can't speak, if they're still doing that or not. I I don't know, but they were at one time, so that's how the county was, and pitching it, but for us, uh, to keep the NICC here and have that presence. And be able to continue to offer the educational opportunities we do, uh, because right now CNA classes is huge. Uh, getting to train nurses and that's what, uh, their one classroom is all about, is just doing training for nursing. Uh, so for us, um, DePaco has been a great partner, they have not jacked the rates up. Uh, they've been very respectful with what we're trying to do, so again, I would commend everybody, but this is what we looked at, we didn't budget that. Um, at the older rate, uh, this year, but we didn't have a new number, but it wasn't that big of a decrease.
Seven hundred and five, I think, so we about thirty. I move to approve resolution on sixty-seven. There, here's a second.
Oh, sorry.
Any further discussion or comments? Okay, Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Mary Ann?
Yes.
Next, I need a motion to adopt resolution sixty-eight, and that's approving, approving memorandum and understanding between the city of Manchester and NICC.
Again, if we had, well, the lease was a sensitive, having a agreement in their place, uh, NICC willing to report, they wanna be part of this. And so what, uh, resolution sixty-eight does is approves a memorandum of understanding.
I can see your jab such as being a, I'm like watching your group.
Any other questions or comments? Joe?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yeah.
And Mary Ann?
Yes.
Alright. Uh, nuisance updates.
Yes, um, one thing I didn't, we noticed, uh, on Tim's report, there's one that he thought was turned over to us that we thought. We had an order at one time and thought it was cleaned up, so we're in contact and get it fine out on that one, it hadn't come to our attention till we saw his report.
Okay.
Uh, and then another one, there's a one twenty-nine Gay Street. We gave them a chance to clean up and they didn't clean up. Uh, was set for for what's called further proceedings to come in, plead guilty, not guilty, admit your violation or not, it was set for today. And the dependents did not show, so we're waiting for the judge to action the order. Anticipate it'll be in our favor since it's kinda hard to lose that way, but the remedy that you make, whether it be a full fine, part fine, that'll be up to the judge. We have an abandoned building for property at Gay, on Gay Street, it's a vacant lot, that's a vacant lot now, not a. And we had it published because we're unable to serve the owners. But we're gonna go over, we're gonna cite it for municipal fines, not just the cost of mowing, but it's a nuisance, we're having to deal with it. So we're gonna ask for, uh, municipal infrastructural citation and get a fine and come back and do it again until something gets done with it. I hope we don't get to this extent, but I had an experience where. Person owned a lot of properties was ignoring the nuisance abatement citations and what have you really. And, um, we ended up taking the judgment and putting up seven or eight of their properties for sheriff's sale and having them sold to pay our fines. And we ended up acquiring many of the properties, it was like sixty thousand dollars. Never did that before since I'm not in, but it makes sense to keep plodding away, did do them good to keep doing. Now, then finally, we have an abandoned property, uh, on Madison Street, four twenty Madison. Uh, we, the first thing we do before we file a citation is we order a lien search and a report from the abstract office. Now, we sent that on the nineteenth of June, uh, we don't have it yet, but I would expect to provide it this week, they usually pretty grung. So that's what we have going now.
Um, I see the property is true, they'll probably, they'd get the roof done or?
Yeah, they they put steel on the roof, I just talked to Mr. Evans, that they are regarding the siding and figuring out, okay. We're getting time to repaint it, I understand that they're looking to recite it, but we need a deadline. And so we'll be reaching out to them, the deadlines when that's gonna be done.
So I don't think it would be much good. Any other questions for Jim? Alright, good, good, alright. Let's see, Sam?
Uh, now, related, this is a file put out, so starting with the lettings, July one. So local projects will have retainedage for a construction of three percent instead of five, so typically all of our previous locally let projects had a retainedage of five percent. From the contractor, DOT standard is three percent, so now Iowa code's changed, so it just basically matches that. So Anderson Street, when that one does let here this winter, that'll have a three percent retainer instead of five percent. So just wanted to get that out there while, while we're thinking of it, just as FYI, um. But, uh, say not a huge change, we'll update, basically make a change in the contract and. Um, and when our pay estimates come out, so that's a major there, but just wanna make note of that. Um, with Anderson Street and the downtown stormwater study, uh, we have been getting out the last few weeks with some of the storms, taking photos. Last Friday, um, was a good one, it was bad, but it was good for at least get some pictures and see how things flow. And would particularly look at Madison and Butler with that stormwater area study, I mean, the water was up, um, to the top curve at the intersection. So we can kind of back calculate to figure out what intensity storm was and that's, we know that's the problem area, so we're trying to. Not saying we'll capture the hundred year, but we'll see what, you know, how big a pipes can we get in the ground, what can we capture, what can we improve now? Um, say with today being only twelve inch pipes coming down from Union and then a fifteen inch and then going to Butler. We, you know. Uh, take a look at that and at least get substantially larger pipes, whichever route we go, and try to help with that as much as possible.
So would that be done with the, um, Anderson Street project, is that?
You know, so this is, this is just the study for the downtown area for potential different projects, I.
Okay. When we start doing the downtown, okay.
So this is just to.
If I had somebody calling me regarding Butler Street, East Butler today, and, um, what they, they wanted to know if there was something we could do. And I said, well, we're not doing anything on Butler Street right now, street repairs or anything, but, you know, but that makes sense.
So we're looking at that, because basically one of the areas we're looking at is that we take stormwater starting at that intersection and take it all the way down to Madison. And then down Delaware and out on the south side of the bridge by Fairway, so that would help relieve, right now, stormwater goes east down Fayette. It goes east down East Main Streets, some of those intakes at the intersections of Fayette and Maine on Madison would divert south. One of the things we don't know is how big of a pipe are we gonna have by the time we get out by Fairway, you know, was, is it gonna get sixteen inch pipe? How feasible is that to to get installed, but that's the stuff we're trying to figure out with looking at kind of downtown as a whole, how big of a storm can we convey?
Thank you.
Yep, um, Anderson Street, guy looked at that one too, that one was flooded at the low point, kind of about the condos and Bon Park. But, um, you know, we had discussions with city staff about adding intakes and we're not, we're basically putting back what's there. Well, there will be doubles at the low point, but really, I mean, once those culverts and that ditch gets full, the water can't go anywhere anyway, so it's. There's not a whole lot by adding more intakes, not helping a lot, it's just if you get, if you get a good rain and the ditch isn't full. I mean, you could help the spread of the street, but for the most part, when it gets like Friday, it's just everything's filling up, so there's no place for it to go. Have been corresponding with utilities, um, the line is probably gonna be reaching out to city here in the next couple of weeks to get a permit. They're gonna be relocating underground, they won't be doing a whole lot parallel on the interstate, but some streets will be a lot of crossings. But talking with them will be work on Anderson and then they're also gonna be doing work down Iowa Street. So their main line, I believe, I can't remember what he said, it's going down Butler and Fayette and then up Iowa and loop it around to Union. Um, so along Anderson Street itself is not their main main line, um, it's mainly just the service houses. So that's why there's a whole, not a whole lot of parallel work along Anderson Street, so we've had a little bit of back and forth, a little bit of tubes. Um, correspondence with other utilities, there, because the line needs down to make sure when they're ready to remove poles, all the other utilities, Windstream, Ecom, Lumen. They need to get off overhead, so, uh, like, poles, um. Did Jason Hade did say you take some poles, I think, I think they said that having like thirteen. And he's like, you know, city, anybody wants, you know, city wants any of its poles, we can, you know, have. It sounds like, I think some of them, I haven't looked closely, but it sounds like some of those are in fair shape, so, and Jason said he'd take maybe six.
Six to eight, we've been using them up at, up to help people figure out how to park it there.
I was just gonna say, can we use whatever you guys aren't using for up there, because they still need some help.
Yeah, well, well, that's what they're gonna do. Help the line people, we're best way to go.
Yeah, and then when you go to league, like at a soccer games or a baseball game or something like that, it's mad and it's crazy.
But that's all I have, unless there's any other questions.
Thank you, thank you.
I really don't.
You don't have anything? Everybody got any questions for Jim?
How come we don't have anything?
There's been no, no new updates from over at, at court, submitting the preliminary claims on the, the drill project. So we're up and waiting, scenario there, so.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Jim, did you have anything else to add to that?
I do have a list, and I apologize for that, I gotta type. Um, and as was noted earlier, new laws of interest have come out, and so one of the new items that has come out is. All new appointed, the elected officials that serve on any boards, commissions are required to take an open records, open meeting course. Iowa Public Information Board is the only one offering that course at this time. Um, so like in that, let's just get reappointed, uh, she will have to take this course within ninety days. Now, Iowa Public Information Board has just pushed out their first publication on this, or Zoom meeting they're doing. We don't know if they're gonna offer this on a monthly basis, weekly basis, probably gonna do that. Uh, we're not sure if they're just gonna video record it, so that way we can just record it and watch it, but it's about an hour and a half. So we're still in the trying to figure this out phase, uh, but with any new officials starting July one, they have to have this. So if you get reelected or, uh, elected to a new position. That was one of the questions we got is if it's a reappointment, reelected, do we have to have that? Because you are required to have a certification, Aaron is the city clerk, is required to maintain and keep those certifications. So if they're in line, uh, and if you fail to take this, you can be fined personally by, uh, state, by Iowa.
The League of Cities is working closely with the Iowa Public Information Board on just hammering out all the details. Cause this impacts all the cities across the state, so they'll, we'll be seeing more information from them as well.
Do Nancy too, I just saw.
Yeah, and, and that's effective July one, which Nancy lives effective July one.
Is that police officers? No, they don't do their meetings, they have to be about.
Police officers always.
Yeah, and what we may do, you know, again, further discussions are needed on this, this is just still real preliminary, is just have everybody do it. So we're all on the same page, you know, that way you're getting the same training as a new person, um. You know, it'll take a little time, but at least then we, um.
We'll have a place.
Have it in place.
All have to do with reelect.
Yeah. And we may just have a, we're still talking about how it's gonna work exactly, we may have it just hosted down here, the library will host it down there, meeting room. Or if it's gonna be a webinar that you can attend from your home, do it that way, but there, there are gonna be some checks and balances put into place from the state. Because you do have to get certificates, so we'll have to, again, we'll get you more details as they come.
But some of the larger cities were asking, well, how can they do their own training so they host, because they have people change over all the time. And right now, leagues, cities are saying, hold off until we know more on how this is actually work. So we'll have that coming up. As noted in my memo to the council, the new K nine unit has shown up, uh, they are using it, so ACE is back out on patrol, that's working well. Uh, it is unmarked, so we're not gonna have a marked unit, uh, it's a black Chevy, um, Tahoe, um, but. I think it's gonna work out well for us. Uh, Friday night, we did have flood event, uh, flash flooding occurred, we had four inches of rain in a short period of time. Uh, did impact a number of localized streets, localized flooding, the river did not get to flood stage, it was not quite to the minor flood stage. It was the action stage, um, but we did have a number of areas where the fire department and street department worked together. And I appreciate everything the fire department did as far as helping block street barricade streets. It was fair season, and so the fair had a huge concert that night in getting all the new people in to figure out how to get to the fairgrounds. And what they're doing there, that was a big challenge and undertaking as we were blocking our streets and messing with people's Google Maps because they couldn't do that route. Uh, so we, we are working on that, uh, we'll have a debriefing probably tomorrow with staff. Some of the things we found, West Marion Street did over top, uh, down by Jays. Now, it wasn't the box culvert that was the issue, it was the culverts along West Marion Street and behind, between Jays. What they own on both sides of the street by Lion, looks like a couple of box culverts or a couple of culverts there got plugged. They self unplugged and that's what helped drain that water down through there, but that is a storm sewer easement through there. About ten years ago, the city cleaned that area and I think we're gonna have to clean it again, but we were hoping the property owners would maintain the property. But I don't think they have the ability to because it's too steep to mow and maintain, so it's probably something we're gonna go through and have to do that. And we'll walk all the waterways again to see what issues we have, uh, so we'll have a little bit more work to do with that. They went through and they, they addressed a lot of the storm sewer intakes that were plugged, they did not open up either, so. Uh, one of the things we did find out with the new camera, it's able to send a signal out with the camera head so we can trace it. So we did use that down Line Street to figure out where that, uh, storm sewer line is physically. And so we're going through with the, um, working with learning group then to get the easement to make sure that that storm sewer is actually within the easement area. Or if it isn't, adjust the easement area to fix it. Uh, but that was a nice, uh, update on that. Uh, but that was a nice uh, up being on a uh, camera with being able to trace it. Yes. Uh, Bon Park Shelter, uh, we are getting ready to go out for bids on that, uh, we'll be bringing that to the council. Did I have them go out to bids? One of the things, part of the design, uh, they did prep it, so we can see uh, small off-street parking lot there, what had about ten cars. So that would be an option for us. Um, didn't want to go much larger and that could take up too much spark. But it does help us to provide access to the shelter. It will easier if you have a picnic going on, you're not carrying a ton of things from the street all the way to the shelter area. But that's not part of the bid because it's gonna be too much, well, we might have it as an alternate to see what the cost is. But it's not something we were initially planning for, but it gives us a nice plan for down the road if we can actually fit it into place.
Um, not to cut you off Tim, but on that Bon Park parking, if if it does come to to life, are we gonna try and knock that out while we're doing the street project?
Probably. Yeah, cause that would be the time.
Right.
West Marion Street Bridge request for qualifications. We have four engineers to submit qualifications. Uh, we have a committee that will review those, uh, and provide the council with a recommendation. We are meeting at noon on Thursday. Um, and then you saw some traffic going on, some issues on East Main Street. Uh, that is the contractor coming back through, raising all the fixtures, the manholes, the valve bodies, uh, for water mains and stuff like that. And then finally, um, we've received the grant agreement from the FAA for the resurfacing project. It does require the council approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to sign it. Uh, we'll have that at the next council meeting processing. That's what I have for an update. If anyone has any questions.
Oh, I have a question. Will this new, um, uh, building will put up a Bon Park without the elevator all because of the flood?
No, it, it will be flood resistant. It's open sided, so there, there's nothing really to flood except some pillars.
Thank you. Any other questions?
The new K nine, uh, police car looks nice.
It's pretty.
It is.
It's not my color, but
No, it, it made me kind of nervous. Come over top of the, the hill there by Walmart, there's a black SUV sitting on the side of the road and
I would not use it as the end of the fair parade again though. Cause it's not hard. Nobody knows. They need, they need to put something at the end of the parade that has
So now it's what?
This is really a police car, because people were sitting there going, is that a police car? So we're like, yes, it's a police car, yeah, I'll go home now, but people didn't know, so.
Uh, in the backseat, there's a cage for the K nine and for people that you're transporting to jail, so.
You can't be very big if you're transferring kids. I know, uh, Trumbull wouldn't fit in at all, so it's really, yeah, it's
They asked me about that.
Did you try?
I said, no.
You didn't try?
It's like, it's like my mom always told me, the moral of the story is, just don't go to jail.
If you see it parked out front though, uh, Trumbull is pretty excited about it. He'll be more than happy to show you the vehicle, cause it's
It's really nice.
It's a nice upgrade for him.
If he's out there wiping the car down, no summer day or
Uh, thank you, Tim. Aaron?
Uh, just two things. You should have gotten an email today from ADP to set up your account. If you didn't get it, let me know and we'll just double check, make sure I have the right email address in there. That is how you will check your pay stubs. Um, you'll get paid this Friday. Um, it will generate an email to you, but it will link to this um, ADP website. You need to do the website or put the app on your phone, whatever you prefer. Um, and then second thing is I think Verizon will be here tomorrow setting the tower on top of City Hall, so there will be a crane out front for a short amount of time, from what I understand.
And then you can go in and set up the information on that.
Yep, just your username and login, and then it should pull you up. Um, and
I did it this afternoon and I can do it. It's really easy.
Okay, yeah, it seems like I'm gonna, it's be working okay. Some of the seasonal struggle, but that's just a learning curve for them, I think, but if you run into any issues, let me know.
Will the road be closed at all for the crane?
No, we'll be able to have a lean open.
I didn't think we needed, from the last time they were over here doing stuff.
Yeah, it should only take about an hour or two.
Any other questions for you? Right, um, and she's not here. Um, Brian?
I got a few things. Um, I was contacted by quite a few of the uh, land or homeowners up on uh, they do Brownfield, and they're very concerned about the um, uh, driveway that is across the dry run, that that may have contributed to the secondary uh, surge of water um, there, and they would like to do that removed. Or possibly a D and R can be called, because I, I don't think that
It was not permitted. Uh, we, we've been in contact with the school and with the contractors, and that is required to be removed for Wednesday morning.
Like for Wednesday, okay. Um, cause there are some very ganked up uh, individuals up that way. And then also, um, I was notified about uh, mulch being taken.
Not mulch, uh, wood chips.
Wood chips?
Uh, Thursday, the fairgrounds called and talked to Jason about getting some wood chips up there Thursday. I understand that they were all up there, but Friday, uh, they, they requested, they didn't talk to anybody about getting there. Um, and I'm not sure what happened there, uh, but the fairgrounds did come down and apparently take a bunch of wood chips out of the fenced in area, they held them up to the fairgrounds further than that. Uh, we did have a conversation, Jason had a conversation with Jean this morning regarding that. One, they need to contact us if they're taking wood chips, it needs to be something that um, comes to us, because with our new contract, we don't actually own those wood chips. They belong, that's our process.
In the gated area. That's what I heard that.
Yeah.
Looking from the gated area.
Yeah, they actually opened the gate, uh, used an unloaders that was there, was not the city unloaders, it was the new hardwoods in order. They used to load them up in all of them.
That's what I do.
Yeah, when I was brought to my intention, it was mentioned that maybe they should be charged for taking the uh, wood chips. Some sort of compensation back, especially being that they used equipment that was not owned by them or the city for authorization. We're authorized, you saw.
Yeah, because they actually technically belong to our P B hardwoods, that would be up to them if they want to purchase anything or not.
Well, I mean, in the monetary status, not like legal charges.
Yeah.
Um, I think just the guys do a good job of monitoring the flat wiring, the cones and all that stuff.
Appreciate that. Um, it was a long night. Not that long, it was only five or seven hours, depending upon who worked. We did have one employee that came in three A M that morning to sweep uh, and didn't get home till eleven P M that night. So he did have a long day. Uh, we had a couple of guys that were off on vacation. We were able to patrol things. But all we had on staff, we didn't have to call them, they were vacation, so. Uh, the fire department, uh, they helped out tremendously. It was, it was mandatory needed. We had to have a couple of fire trucks to block some streets. Because we get, have people just go through cones around cones, they didn't.
Yeah.
So Chris and
They worked very well with the city.
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah. Well, and thank you, you guys too. Yeah, yeah, I appreciate it.
You guys, I, I honestly think that the city and the firefighters really took care of that really well, with all the added traffic and everything, so I talk to you guys for that. I drove up to check some stuff on the north end. The um, roam closures and stuff like that were amazing. I wish they were closed, obviously. You guys did a good job.
It sounded like we had a near miss, lightning hit four vehicles.
They had a tree that, that circulated out and had, and four vehicles disabled, I should, that's where you go in that call?
Yes.
You can explain it better than me, though. I just accept it.
Lightning hit the tree and four vehicles ran around and had sustained damage from it. Lucky it wasn't nobody in there, the vehicles or both of their at least. Uh, that would have been devastating.
Um, did, I mean, cars start on fire or just fried?
No, I think they just had electrical damage. There was one vehicle without, and it blocked up the initial light grid for going, so obviously that has some damage.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a video circulating now, it's pretty, pretty wild.
Yes, yeah.
Can't believe somebody actually caught it on video. I mean, your camera even, that's amazing. Mary Ann?
Well, I guess the only thing is, we talked about the city, our meeting, the whole, but I'm gonna bring it up, because we just, city council meeting. Um, our fourth of July, I thought it was wonderful. Heard a lot of really great comments about it, and the big comment, of course, is the slip and slide that the kids did from the pool. Thank you to the fire department for their help, and thank you to Jill for getting rid of it, because he helped pull it all up, so I appreciate that. Um, Doug just served our, Marvel's job, me and JJ, um, particularly, I think, just really deserve a lot of the credit for the great job that they did.
The lifeguards.
The lifeguards were amazing, and because of the good job that the lifeguards did, Doug gave them a pizza party the other day, so um, I thought that's pretty nice that he gave them the opportunity to have that pizza party, to show them that he didn't appreciate. So the whole thing was really nice.
Everybody wants a mixture, that's all.
Yeah, very good committee that we did.
Yeah, I have thank yous for all the, I was gonna name people, I'm gonna get to myself.
Was there any negatives on fourth of July fireworks? I, I heard I, I had quite a few people saying to me like, we really have to allow it.
Yeah.
Dogs get scared.
I had a lot of The veterans PTSD, yeah. Uh, I had a lot of people say, why don't we have them? And I had just as many people ask, I'm glad we don't have them. So I had a nice mixture of the two.
Yeah, it was about fifty bits.
Yeah, yeah, um. I think kind of fun, I'm just gonna throw it out there, because next year's two hundred and fiftieth, we should be celebrating hard and happy for that.
Yeah.
Um, people wanna do something again, but just laser light shows out there. We still have the lights, but you don't have to have a noise.
Someplace did, just did a drone show.
Or a drone show too, with possibilities.
Mount Vernon, yeah.
I think they have a company that does something actually.
And that veterans law school.
Yeah, so maybe that would be something to, that can too, and be something unique. Anyway, all right, anything else, Mary Ann? We all interacted with that. Okay, all right, Joe?
Uh, yeah, so I just wanted to thank everybody involved with putting on the force, uh, festivities. I did get some feedback on it and a lot of people love it, and while I was there talking to Doug about, you know, first year is always great, but it's learning and that's, we're throwing ideas at each other and stuff, and so it's gonna only get better. Which is super exciting. Um, a lot of people in the community that, when they would talk to me, they're like, it's about time that we did something, so um, super excited for that. Um, wanted to thank Bean for taking me in the ladder truck and my family in the ladder truck for the, for the parade to start the fair. Um, and actually getting to actually be in it, ride in it, feel how it when it turns and stuff like that, and then with my military background, I understand like I don't drive eighteen wheelers, but we only had to back up three times, so Bean didn't do too terribly. Um, but yeah, just a huge thanks to have that opportunity. I know the kids loved it, and then uh, the fair, I just uh, wanted to thank the fair board for, you know, everything that they did this year, the fair I think was was nice. I mean, less rides and, and stuff than I anticipated, but I mean, the fairgrounds are really starting to come and looking really nice and beautiful, and even after all that rain, we got Friday, I was walking around Saturday at the truck full and it wasn't sodding mess like it had been the year prior, so. Really exciting to see a lot of those, those things get learned, so.
All right, thank you. Well, as we talked about with the fourth of July, um, that kind of came into fruition as part of our kindness thing for the year. And also, um, we were working with a group that is uh, oh, Manchester Together. Um, trying to offer uh, new residents to the community an opportunity to meet people and also to uh, give people in our community an opportunity who don't get an opportunity to get out of town, so they can celebrate the fourth, that they can actually do it here in town. So that was kind of a brainchild out of that, so um, I'd like to personally thank Mary Ann and Linda um, for both uh, being on that committee and helping with that, and then we had Molly and um, Molly Beckman and Rihanna Headbutt, I pronounced her wrong, the name wrong. April Lordison, um, they helped with the Little Kitties Parade, which I think we had almost fifty kids in that little parade. And they were so cute. And then, um, Doug, uh, if he man of the year were, could have been given that day, he would have gotten it. And uh, JJ was phenomenal, and then also the streets department, uh, Jason met me down there really early with cones, so we were able to go. Ed for the, the slip and slide idea. Doug putting it into fruition and JJ for manning it, and then also the lifeguards for helping all the kids, and then the three day swim, I think Doug said there was over four hundred kids in the pool that day. So, um, it was just fun to see so many people from the community having fun and big smiles on their faces and everybody having fun together. And um, oh, and Nicole Riley, that's my other person. I missed her, Nicole. Nicole was another one that was very helpful, and James from Fairway.
Yeah.
He put a big plug in earlier that day and went down the slip and slide, just like I did, and I think Joe did too. It was fun. I got down it four times myself. So, um, thank you everybody for just helping make our fourth a really great celebration, so. And um, other than that, I didn't have anything else. Um, thank you all for joining us tonight. I'll take a motion from Joe, a second from Mary Ann to adjourn, and we are adjourned. Have a great week.